Alderman Smith, should I start from the beginning?
Better early than late.
Okay, all right, just checking. All right, welcome, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular city council meeting of October 9th, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
Zazada?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Eight present.
All right, our meeting is in order. Moving on to agenda item B, Pledge of Allegiance. We'll have Captain Hy-Vee lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You bet. I appreciate you coming by, Shadow. All right, moving on to agenda item C, Approval of the Agenda. We take a motion to approve the agenda as is.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
All right, the agenda has been approved. Moving on to agenda item D, Presentations, Proclamation. I have a proclamation to read, and it's regarding Fire Prevention Week, which is October 8th through 14th, 2023, whereas the City of DeKalb is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,800 people in the United States in 2021, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 338,000 home fires, and whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States and fire departments responded to more than 166,400 annually between 2016 and 2020, and whereas two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, with 31% of these fires resulting from unattended cooking, and whereas more than half of reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves, whereas children under five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire, whereas DeKalb's residents should not turn pot handles towards the back of the stove, always keep a, or, sorry, DeKalb residents should turn pot handles towards the back of the stove, not hanging out over the edge. Always keep a lid nearby when cooking. Keep a three-foot kid-free zone around the stove, oven, and other things that could get hot, watch what they heat, and set a timer to remind them that they are cooking. I need that one cooking on the grill. Whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half, and whereas DeKalb's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas DeKalb's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim October 8th through 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week throughout DeKalb, and urge all people of DeKalb to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week 2023, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of DeKalb's Fire and Emergency Services. Chief, I think we've had a few specific instances around this lately that you guys have responded to. Yeah, so this is, uh, this is really important, and those that are watching in the audience and those that are here today, kitchen fires, we see quite a few of those, and it's great if we can all do our part ultimately to help eliminate those. Chief, I'd love it if you came up. I'd love to get a photo op of all of us supporting Fire Prevention Week. You all game, come down and get a photo shot? All right, then, moving on to Public Participation E, we have none right now. We do have one speaker that'll speak at item L1. Moving on to agenda item F, Appointments, we have none. Then, agenda item G, Consent Agenda. Number one, Minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting of September 25th, 2023. Number two, Accounts Payable and Payroll through October 9th, 2023 in the amount of $1,753,421.68. Number three, Investment and Bank Balance Summary through August, 2023. Number four, Year-to-Date Revenues and Expenditures through August, 2023. Number five, Crime-Free Housing Bureau Report, September, 2023. And number six, Resolution 2023-090, Approval of Executive Session Minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as is?
So moved.
I'm gonna go with, uh, moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Consent Agenda has been approved. Agenda item H, Public Hearings, we have none, which moves us on to Agenda Item I, Considerations, we have none. Moving on to Agenda Item J, Resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2023-091, Authorizing Updates to the City of DeKalb Federal Transit Administration Title VI Program Policies. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As the council's aware, and probably many of the people in our audience are aware, the city receives very substantial federal funding to help us run a major transit agency in our area, serving members of our community and also others in the nearby areas. And, uh, not surprisingly, the City of DeKalb has to meet a lot of standards, federal and state, to continue to receive that funding. And one of those that the Federal Transit Administration requires is compliance with Title VI programming, and every three years, we're to, uh, provide an update on what we have done to make sure that we are in compliance with the Title IX provisions of the federal law. And that, this is up because we have been following those guidelines, and we have to submit a revised program that shows that we are doing same. In the background to your agenda tonight, you'll see a copy of those provisions. I highlighted some of them in the background for you tonight. This is something that our transit manager, Mike Nguyen-Kirchen, has prepared and is responsible for not just documenting, but for, for following the provisions, and so are the people who work for TransDev Services, who provide the actual coordination of the bus service on a daily basis. Examples of the kinds of things that have to be done and updated on a periodic basis are signs on all of our transit vehicles, which, by the way, have already been installed that identify people's rights, people's rights as they relate to Title VI. It designates the transit manager as the investigator of any alleged discrimination as it relates to Title VI. Notification if no violation is found and a complaint it wishes to appeal to the decision, that can be done. Determination in new transit-related projects or changes to our transit routes, and there have been a few changes to our transit routes to extend service to Elburn and also to extend service to our fastest-growing areas for new employment on the south side. But whenever that is done, there, there has to be a very clear identification, not only of what those routes are, but what would be the impact on minority and limited English populations and any remedial actions that the city is prepared to take to address those. And finally, when providing a public transit as we do, there has to be a plan to assist in communication, particularly with limited English proficiency persons, and we are at work on that as well. So the program that is identified in the background is what's up for you tonight to resolve, to, to, uh, stick with, and this would be with your permission and with your approval submitted then to the FTA.
Counsel, any questions or comments? As usual, great background. Thank you, Mr. Nguyen-Kirchen, for a lot of the detail that you gave us. I assume we're heads nodding across the board, so move forward.
It's, uh...
Then we can move on to Resolution...
It's a resolution, Mayor, we need to take a vote on...
Do we? Oh, it's a consideration, I'm sorry. I've been doing this for two and a half years. You think, uh...
Well, consideration is right above that.
I recognize different words. All right. So, uh, if there's no further questions or comments, I would call for roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Resolution 2023-091 passes because we had roll call. All right, moving on to number two, Resolution 2023-092, Approving a Real Estate Purchase and Sale Agreement for City-Owned Property at 807 Oak Street. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderwoman Larson, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. In recent years, certainly for the last five years, the, the city has been more active in working with the Illinois Housing Development Association, IDA's acronym, and also with the Community Development Block Grant Program and the federal government, CDBG, to remove blighting influences created by vacant homes. The, the reason for their vacancy often has to do with economic, uh, problems. Previous owners who were not able to keep, keep up the maintenance maybe left, and, and then the, the home falls into further disrepair, and eventually neighbors come and say, what are you gonna do about this house? And, and we try to work with the owners. Sometimes at that point, it's gone to a bank. Try to work with whoever is the title holder. Sometimes we succeed, sometimes we don't. There was a distressed home at 807 Oak Street, which earlier in the year, the council agreed to, uh, after working with the title holder, which was a financial institution, to help with the demolition. Uh, and we, some of the money for the demolition came from the IDA Strong Communities Program grant. Uh, and, and in exchange for the cooperation of the title holder, we got a deed in lieu of foreclosure, which allowed us to recoup some part of our cost over and above what the grant support was providing for the demolition. So this, this is a long way of saying it's back to you now because there is a, a, a neighbor. Uh, this is a not, not a buildable lot anymore by our zoning standards. A neighbor's been looking at this property for a while and has made an offer. There have been no other offers since the spring. So we recommend, we're not gonna cover ourselves, but it's the right thing to do.
Counsel, questions or comments? Seems like a lot of these go to the neighbor to expand their lot, essentially. Is that correct? Seems like...
I don't know if a lot, but this is the second one this year.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Usually will happen if they're substandard lots.
Yeah. Because this one's so small.
It is.
Unless we approve tiny houses or something, it'd be hard to build something on that.
In the last four and a half years or so, some of those tiny lots have been bordered by other tiny lots. So building a smaller home, starter home, you know, maybe a two-bedroom, something like that has made sense. So we've sold and, and there's been some construction, which is nice.
That's great. All right, hearing no other further comments or questions, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Resolution 2023-092 passes. Moving on to number three, Resolution 2023-093, Authorizing the Dedication of the FY 2023 Allocation in the Amount of $50,000 to Barb City Manor for Boiler System Repairs. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, maybe some people looking in and some people in the audience don't realize that the city is the title holder for Barb City Manor, but for many, many decades, we've, we've had an arrangement with, uh, the Barb City Manor, Inc., uh, to provide some assistance for, um, capital expenses, the general upkeep, the things that happen to an older building such as this. And we've been so lucky to have the, the management, which has done, and the volunteer boards, which over the years have done such a good job in keeping things up. Back in 2019, uh, the, an arrangement that had been in place for quite a while had expired. The council entered a 10-year lease program, which had the opportunity for Barb City Manor, Inc., to receive $50,000 a year to help with the capital expenses. Uh, in recent years, much of this money in the last three years, really, has gone to offset the extraordinary costs of, of replacing, uh, two major passenger elevators, the ones that served when it was still a hospital, as you walk in the front door, and an auxiliary, um, elevator as well. Uh, the proposal for, uh, the next allocation of $50,000 is to help with the repairs to the boiler system, and in particular, our money would go toward replacement of a condensation line and pump assembly that would be installed. And it, it makes sense, it's in line with the, the lease agreement that was done back in 2019. Sarah Davis is here, who is the executive director. There've only been, you're the fifth? Fourth? Fifth? There was one for like two months, okay. Uh, but everybody has served long, and she has been serving for quite a while and, and has succeeded to this position, and as with her predecessors, has been so helpful in, in coordinating these types of things. So we recommend their request and hope you will too.
City Council, comments or questions? Well, with that few directors, I think that shows the quality of the operation, but the dedication that you all have to the residents. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of us, that obviously you have 30, 40, maybe 50 years in this role, so we appreciate your commitment greatly. All right, hearing no other comments or questions, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Resolution 2023-093 passes. Uh, you're more than welcome to exit stage left at this point, if you like. Uh, our meetings are riveting, but I know you're a busy person, so... All right, moving on to our, our number four, Resolution 2023-094, Authorizing the Payment for Police Academy Training Involving Five New Police Officers to Macon County Law Enforcement Training Center in an Amount Not to Exceed $41,500. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Perkins, perfect. Uh, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor.
Did I get it wrong? All right, all right, we'll get you next time.
So in Illinois, there's something called the Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board, uh, and that certifies, is responsible for certifying, uh, police recruits. Uh, their initial certification is become a Illinois police officer. Uh, there are a number of these, um, there are a number of academies that the board has recognized to provide that certification. We have recently been, been sending our recruits to Macon County Law Enforcement Training Center, and they like to be paid for the work that they do, which takes 14, is it 14 weeks, Chief? 16, okay. 16 weeks of training onsite for the prospects, and when they get through that, then there's a certification, and they come to us, and then it's another 14 weeks, or we bump it up to six, for field, field training, yeah? Okay, yeah.
Excel and program.
Yeah, so it's, it's a long time in training.
And real quickly, that field training is where they're actually shadowing an officer of the DeKalb Police Department for a period of time until we're confident we can release them to the wild on their own. Yep, okay.
Right. So it's a, it's a rigorous and extensive kind of training. Uh, we had three recently go through, through Macon County, and we've got two more that will be done by the end of the calendar year. And, uh, got the bill, it's what we agreed to, and we want to pay it for those five, $41,500.
Counsel, questions or comments? Well, Chief, I hear it constantly, patrol, patrol, patrol. This gets us closer to 70. I know a lot of us are looking forward to when patrol is gonna be a, a regular thing. You guys have been doing an incredible job lately. I've seen more and more people just pulled over on Sycamore Road or South Forest Street or whatever. Um, but really, I know our residents are looking forward to seeing your presence even more. And I'm hoping when we get to 70, we might be knocking on the door of our own little patrol division, I'll call it, potentially, all right?
Yep, traffic, traffic, uh, traffic team is on the way, we just have to get there, so...
All right. All right, uh, hearing no other comments or questions, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
All right, Resolution 2023-094 passes. Moving on to Agenda Item K, Ordinances, Second Reading, we have none. Moving on to Agenda Item L, Ordinances, First Reading. Uh, before we get started, we do have a, a comment form that was filled out by School Board Member Christopher Boyce. Uh, if you would like to come up to the podium? And just so you know, I do restrict it to three minutes, um, so you've got three minutes. Perfect.
Mayor Barnes, members of this council, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm here today as a lifelong resident of DeKalb and a member of our school board. I do want to caveat, though, I am only one of seven, so I do not speak on behalf of our board when I'm here tonight, only myself in that role within the board. Right now before you, we have got special permits for our new elementary school. This is something that has only been an idea and something that can come up because of the growth and development that you guys have allowed to be created within our city. Because of the economic development and the second chances the efforts that you guys have done have created, we have a booming population within the Antiglade North Corridor now. And as a district, we are tasked with the education of those students. And something that we have heard from our teachers and many people within the district is that they would like lower class sizes so that they are able to properly give our students the attention and care they deserve within the classroom. So as this new elementary school comes before you, I want to say two things. We do look forward to working with you guys going forward to get this school going. And part of that, though, is I do want to say, to say it takes a village. I'd say we're more than that at this point. It takes a city, it takes a district, it takes a county, it takes a library, it takes the, all of the taxing bodies within our area working together to make sure that we continue to make sure that our burden on our taxpayers is low enough, that we can continue to support and bring in these businesses that give us the new funds and new money we need to build things like our new elementary school or your new fire station. And that's just a part of growth and progress. I wish, some people will say, I wish we weren't building an elementary school. I think the fact that we are is one of the greatest things for our city. It shows that we have a young and vibrant population that's going to be ready to take the mantle and the torch for us when our time comes on. So I would just like to put my hat in the ring to say that I am in full support of this elementary school, and I look forward to working, not in a silo as a district alone, but with the city collaboratively to make sure that we are providing our citizens with the best options going forward, whether that's for their property taxes or their education choices. Thank you.
Appreciate you, School Board Member Boyce. All right, so that brings us ordinance. I would take a motion to bring Ordinance 2023-043, Approving a Special Use Permit for a Public Elementary School at 1240 Normal Road, DeKalb Community Unit School District 428, to the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Walker. Uh, oh, sorry, uh, moved by Alderwoman Zazada, seconded by Alderman Walker. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Boyce, for coming out tonight and speaking to this. Uh, this matter comes to you from the Planning and Zoning Commission, which had a public hearing on a special use permit back on September 18th, and they recommended, um, your, um, support for this. Uh, I'm gonna add a few details, touch on a few things that are in the public domain that are conversations that may be of interest to you, and acknowledge some of the conversation that occurred also in this Plan Commission meeting of several weeks ago. So, uh, as Mr. Boyce said, yes, this is a, a, a proposed school that's to fit on a nine-acre site, which has previously been used by NIU School of Nursing and was built years ago for a, another elementary school called Robert School. Some of you may know about that. Uh, in August of this year, the school district and NIU agreed to a $1.86 million lease-to-purchase agreement. Uh, the, the Plan Commission action and, and your review are a part of a larger due diligence process that was anticipated and has to occur before that agreement is consummated. So the school district is planning to renovate the existing building, which is about 23,000 square feet, a little bit more than that, and to construct an additional 46,700 square feet for a total of about 70,000 square feet. This is a, an elementary school that would be open sometime, presumably in 2025. Uh, there's some background in, in your, uh, report for tonight. I'm not gonna go into the great detail on the, the, the usage, but there are intended to be about 28 classroom spaces and some additional officers, offices for support staff. Uh, the layout is what has, uh, attracted a lot of attention, and in the course of the discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission, a couple of aspects about that in particular were, were keyed upon, and, and there was some, uh, audience participation along, about those. And one of those was, uh, a new circle drive off of Ridge that would provide for the, uh, school bus drop-off and pickup. Uh, this is in an area that, um, also is proximate to some trees that were built apparently back, uh, they're quite large now, but they were built back in the seven, or they were installed back in the 70s. You can't build a tree, can you? You have to grow a tree.
Can you actually install them, or do you plant them, you know?
Uh, and, uh, also there is a, uh, there's still, is planted a, a path that is currently owned by the, the DeKalb Park District, but it, uh, used to join the original school site with what was, uh, a, a new development back in the 70s and 80s, uh, next door and just to the east. Uh, over the years, uh, there never was a paved path, path created there. It was kind of a cut-through. It was used to get to a, a little, uh, pop-up park, I guess, or top park, or, uh, there's some swing sets and, and the like. But, uh, over time, uh, children weren't using it as much as young adults and for purposes other than the recrea, well, recreation, but a different kind of recreation.
Not the approved recreation, yeah.
Uh, in any case, uh, trees have grown there, and they're quite mature trees now. Uh, and, uh, one of the, uh, initial thoughts was, uh, when it reopened, the, the school had considered reopening the, the path to connect that neighborhood, thinking that might be a good way for children to go back and forth. But the neighborhood next door spoke pretty loudly at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and to say, well, we're not, we're not interested in that anymore. And that was a conversation maybe 40 years before, but it's not something that was desired now. So it's important for you to know. And actually, when the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, was ready to take a, a vote to, to recommend or not recommend, uh, they made it very specifically clear that they did not support reopening that path, just so you know that. The, uh, stormwater, uh, provisions, uh, if, if you want more details on that, Zach Gill is here, our city engineer, and be happy to address. So there, there are a number of areas that would be, uh, used for detaining stormwater at the southeast, east, and northeast portions. Uh, there is a, uh, drop-off for parents. It's off of Ridge, it's, it, you get to it from Normal, but there's a, a... It's off of Ridge, it's, you get to it from Normal, but there's a circular type of a path that would minimize the stacking of cars on Normal and encourage that to be done on the school site itself. It's long enough and deep enough also to take care of that, but also, there's still provision for some green space to the east of that area. Finally, I guess I want to say that there's been some talk about, so what's the impact of the new school on local taxpayers? What's going to happen? And there was a little reference to that by Mr. Boyes in his opening comments. So, one of the things that Mayor and the Council have been very concerned about is trying to get all local taxing bodies to work together so that our combined or aggregate tax rate can be reduced. We discovered-
To below nine percent?
Yes. We discovered, I'm just going to get to that. We discovered, well, it's been obvious for some time that we've been higher than our competitors in Northern Illinois, and whereas nine percent was about the average for some of the larger cities to our east, Batavia, St. Charles, Geneva and others, we were up around eleven and a half as recently as two thousand twenty-one. We're down now to just over ten dollars per hundred, and it's our hope to get down to nine percent, as the mayor said. It'd be nice if it could be this year, but no more than this year and the next levy year. So, where does the school district stand? I don't speak for the school board on this and I, the school board has not yet had a conversation about where their levies are going to be. We're going to have a conversation here at the next regular council meeting. Our Finance Advisory Committee is going to have first crack at it next week. School Board likewise will be taking this up before the end of October for a first consideration and others leading to action in November, and that's what all the other local taxing bodies are doing. We just, a week ago, got what was, is probably going to be the, as close as can be to the final determination of what the EAV is going to be for each of our local taxing bodies. But we won't know for sure until next April, but long after, months after, we have to submit our levies to the county. So, where are we? I gave the Council just a couple of thoughts on this. Frankly, with what I see, the county Supervisor of Assessment saying the EAV is going to be for our school district, I find it hard to believe that their rate would not go down. And I've given you a couple of examples of that. This is just Bill spinning some numbers, but if he took a five percent increase in their EAV, their rate would actually go down almost eleven percent because of the enormous EAV, the denominator, if you will, in the calculation. And if, let's say, we double that levy increase to something like eleven percent, I was aiming for an even number, flat number, the rate still goes down by about five-point-seven percent. So, we're wrestling with some of the same big numbers on the denominator. The question is, what's the numerator going to be? And then we've got the rate figured out. We could spin lots of options here. I'm trying to say to you that if that's part of your consideration tonight, it may well be, that, because this is something I live and breathe every year at this time, too, I'm confident that there is not only the intent, but the very, very strong likelihood that we're going to see what we were hoping for from all taxing bodies. And the school board would be taking the lead with us in that. That's all I want to say for now, and there are some, I talked right through the graphics that are loaded up. If you, do you want to see those? You want me to put them up?
Probably graphic of the layout of the new school, but also, a point of clarification, when you say significant economic or equalized assessed value has gone up significantly, I think is what you said, is that ten million? Is that fifty million? Is that a hundred million? Or could it be even crazier, more than a hundred and seventy million dollars in one year?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So, more than a hundred and seventy million dollars in one year?
Correct.
Unprecedented?
Correct.
Okay.
So, that gives you an idea. I'm sure everybody knows where that is and the, sorry, this is a little bit small, but to get it on the screen, this is a colorized version of what's intended and Dan is very impressive with what I'm doing right now. So, this is Ridge Drive, and when I started my comments, I pointed out, there's a bus drop-off and pickup here. You see the point of the building here, this is where students would get on and off, buses would come around and then go out. The employee parking would be where the parking lot is now. I talked about a parental vehicle drop-off, which is down here off of Normal. I'm told, and I'll defer to, we have some school officials in the audience tonight, defer to them, but as I understand it, students who would be attending this elementary school who live west of Annie Glidden would be bused. Is that correct, Tammy? Do you want to speak to that point? Tammy Carson's here tonight to help us work through this. And so, there will be, although this would be a walkable school, there will be some students that probably would have to be bused, and so there would be some bus activity.
There would be, because of crossing Annie Glidden Road, that would be the reason that they would be bused, it's not because of the proximity to the school.
And that's all over the school district. Whenever it's a major road, we don't want our littles to be trying to navigate traffic, so that triggers the whole busing option.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. If you don't mind just staying up there, who knows what could come up? Okay.
Oh, and we recommend, from the staff level, the Plan Commission's recommendation to you to support this.
And there's been some discussion about what we can and cannot do at this phase of the process, so I'll ask you just to keep us a little on track on that going forward.
Okay, just real quick. So, what's come before you tonight is a special use permit, which is a zoning action. The Council can, unlike the Planning and Zoning Commission, its purview is more expansive and you can talk about any and all issues that relate to and often do, as you're expected to by our constituents. There is one thing, timing is an issue here, and I'll touch on that. The city just, we're three-quarters of the way through a process that the school district is at the beginning of, but running pretty quickly into a track, call it a slot, if you will, at a steady speed that picks up pace because of expectations relating to raising bond support, a public obligation bond for the school expenses. The city just went through this at a much smaller scale with our proposal to build a new fire station. There, first of all, has to be a, something called a preliminary official statement, which is some fifty pages long, talks a lot about, this is the kind of thing that bond buyers, and many of them are banks, large financial institutions worldwide, anywhere in the world can buy these bonds. They'll read to see what the financial capacity is of the school to pay back the principal interest on the bonds. While that's going on, there's usually a conversation with, and I don't know if at the schools this is true, but our mayor would know, are you going to get these rated, these bonds? I assume.
Correct. We just had a rating presentation with Moody's.
With Moody's, okay. And we just did too.
Looking to upgrade.
That's good. Did you get a report yet?
It's actually coming this week.
Yeah, we did too. Well, we got a bond upgrade, so we wish you well.
Thank you.
If you do.
It went well.
But once that's done and then-
You just glossed over that.
I can talk at greater length.
Bond upgrade, oh, you are going to, okay. Doing your city manager report maybe?
Yes.
Okay, good, good, good.
But, and then, so that's important, but then, right now, I don't know if any of you watched any of the financial TV programs, but there's a lot of turmoil in the bond market, so you really want to get these priced and nailed as fast as you can. But the thresholds for the school district are coming, I believe, on the seventeenth. This is the ninth, maybe it's sooner than that, our mayor knows. And I have to say, if the school district was asking us to stop and step outside of the process, which might have put us back another three to six months because we'd have to start all over again, I don't think I would be happy about that, but I'll defer to you.
Correct. We are, we're going through the financing option and there is a very strict timeline. Additionally, to following the timeline that we had scheduled, we also are looking to mitigate our interest costs by going through an investment management firm. So, what they're going to be doing is looking for these taxes and bonds for an investment rate, and then the spread between the bond interest with the investment rate will be used to pay off. So, right now, it, with the information we have, it's the best timing to go through the investment management process and also going through the bond. Additionally, we are incurring costs with our architectural civil engineering, and any type of delay will cost us unnecessary and unforeseen costs.
Two quick things before I open it up for questions. Counsel, we all, I think, have been unified on, you know, with all the unprecedented economic development that we're having in the city of DeKalb, that at this point, for the taxpayer not to see some relief, I think we're unified on, we absolutely want to make sure our taxpayers see some relief. When we talk about affordable housing, that's what all of us want to drive towards as well. Reduction of our tax rate is one of the rays, one of the ways that we can help contribute to this whole overall concept of affordable housing. I have, as we all know, have talked back and forth with the school district on this particular issue, talking with Superintendent Minerva Garcia Sanchez. I had a meeting with President Dacey as well, and it really does appear that the school district is completely on board with trying to drive to the reduction of the tax rate. I think at this point, every taxing body, and more importantly, all the elected officials that represent all the taxing bodies, realize it would be completely egregious for any taxing body not, at this point, to take care of the taxpayer while all of our levies, which means all of our budgets, will continue to grow, which is a phenomenal thing, and that's what we all want, but we have to take the taxpayer into consideration. And I feel comfortable and I'm going to say confident that the school district is one of those taxing bodies that's going to help us drive to the continued reduction of our tax rate within the city of DeKalb. As Bill mentioned, this is a whole planning and zoning special use permit issue, which is a specific thing that us as a, as a body, we really do need to approve so they can continue moving forward, and we are limited in the things that we can do because we do have to make sure that we keep it on topic, that this is a special use permit for the school, and we either approve or deny that at this point. The comments made by School Board Member Christopher Boyes also talked about being in a silo. The taxing summit that we had, I think it was last March, Bill, and then also August, we've had in our conversations there, one, the whole main topic right now is the reduction of the tax rate and getting every taxing body on board to continue to drive and give back to the taxpayer after decades of a higher tax rate than every other community in our area. But then what we also talked about, to your point, Mr. Boyes, was we are operating in silos, and we need to figure out how, as taxing bodies, we need to get together on a semi-regular basis and collaborate, talk about different initiatives we might have and how collectively we can all work together to the success of those, so we're not, we'll call it blindsided by different things that just pop up, come onto our agenda, which triggers a whole nother set of conversations. So, I'm looking forward to, and I think there's a commitment from the school board as well to be a part of that dialogue going forward, so we can all work together on behalf of the taxpayer and not in our individual silos. So, with those comments, I'd open it up for questions. Alderman Perkins, I think you have one.
Yeah, I just had one clarifying question, and it's on the site layout itself. So, basically, the access to the school will be, bus access will be off of Ridge and the parking lot access, the student drop-off, will be off of Garden on the southeast corner, right?
They actually enter off of Normal and then they wind through to the edge of the school and then they exit off of Garden.
Okay, all right. And, but right now, Garden really isn't used at all on that site, so that'll be a change going forward.
That's correct.
It'll be an exit point.
Correct. It dead-ends into that property and it'll be a one-way exit.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Alderman Verwick.
Hi there. Just a confirmation, it sounded like there were about eighty percent of the children will be walkers, so I think with regard to some of the traffic concerns, we won't see as much traffic perhaps as some of the other schools. And secondly, does this ease enrollment pressures at other buildings? As you know, I've never been a fan of portable classrooms, so is it possible that some of those are removed with this new school?
Yes, in doing the calculations of adding these additional classrooms, we will be going through and looking at all of the boundaries for each of our school buildings, elementary school buildings, and the goal is that we would be able to be under twenty-five students' cap in all of our elementaries versus the twenty-eight that we're in right now. And that does take into account the elimination of four of our five mobiles. The only one that will remain is at Lincoln Elementary, and that's only because the size of that school does not, is not sufficient enough to be a two-section elementary and have appropriate space for library, music and art. So, that's the only reason we would be keeping those at the Lincoln site.
Is that what would be in that trailer essentially, is art, music and library?
And actually, that's what we've seen in the, when we have put the mobiles into place. The intent was to have either the library and/or a music room on one side of each of the mobiles. Some of the principals have been able to make some changes within their building, so they didn't have to put both the music and the library into it and have been able to utilize the other space for something else, but music is the one, the primary class that goes out there.
Okay.
That's great news. Thank you.
Alderman Walker.
Hey, how you doing, Mr. Carson? Hey, so, would we be, I guess we would be getting jobs for other teachers, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Like, how many would we be creating?
That's a great question.
And to piggyback off that as well, while you're looking for your answer, would we be moving other teachers from other, like, schools or how does that work?
We will be posting the positions, so the current staff will have the opportunity to apply for those or post those jobs and then it'll be an interview process, just like anytime we have an opening, but our mayor can comment on how many additional staff we're looking at.
Yeah, so, we're going to have twenty-eight classrooms in addition to other special ed and arts theme, many others. So, the way I see it is we're going to bring high-level professionals coming in, not just teachers, but, you know, support staff, social workers, sociologists and so forth. So, there will be a professional level coming into the district to field the jobs there.
Okay, how many? Roughly? I know you don't have to come with a pinpoint answer, just give me a guess.
Yeah, we have modeled it after Cortland, which is about like, which is about fifty-four DCDA members, which is teachers' union. One thing I want to mention is also that we just settled with the teachers' union on a four-year contract, which is very competitive, and I think it's going to help with any teacher shortage of the state, even the federal level is facing. So, we're in a very good position. The union is on board with this school, they're happy to have it, and they can't wait for their class reduction size and other things that this particular school will provide, especially for that community.
I got a question for the city manager, if I could, sir. So, I mean, let's not be naive, we know this is a high-crime area, you know, we both, we all know this, so would that be more SROs over there? Would they have, you know, a little bit more than the other elementaries and high schools? Or how do we want to go about that?
I think it's, we'll have to hear what the school district thinks they need by way of security, and the SROs were there and still are there to help with their need for security, so we'll listen to the, I think as your personnel planning and so forth goes a little bit further along, we'll know a little bit more about that.
Thank you, sir.
Alderman Zazada.
With that, I imagine, have you guys considered what the new boundaries would look like?
We've just started to put that together, trying to figure out exactly how that would look so that each school is not exceeding that capacity and we're not already overextending ourselves right out of the gates, so that we have some cushion in each. So, we haven't, we're just getting into that, that planning right now with our demographer.
Yeah, I think I've already had people reach out with concerns about that, just because it's, you know, clearly in my ward and it's, yeah, so I don't know what else to say, sorry.
Yes, Solomon Walker.
So, well, I'll just say the obvious, so there's a lot of minority kids in that area. So is it just going to be a school for minority kids with a sprinkle of white kids here and there or how are we going to do that? Because I don't think that, you know, we should have a 90% minority school, you know, just based off the area. That just doesn't make sense to me. I would like for, you know, my nephews and nieces to be able to integrate and understand, you know, you know, a wide world of people. So how is that, like how are you going to, you know, put that into your planning?
Well, depending on what programs are brought into that school, because it, it wouldn't necessarily just be a K through fifth grade, there would potentially be some special programs, which means there's kids coming from all over. We won't be busing us to the level we are busing now, but depending on how the boundaries are drawn, we can go quite an extensive route without the concern of, of being overpopulated, you know, and having a good diverse population there. But again, not my area of expertise.
I got you.
And it is something though that we are looking at very heavily. It's not something that we're just going to suddenly start drawing circles around schools and we'll be looking at all that information so that we do have the proper enrollment in the schools.
What, what, what size, oh, sorry. Alderman, go ahead.
I guess since this is that we're looking at changing this, for a special permit, from what I've gathered from some of the letters that have come in and different things, that we really have to address the neighborhood that it's in. And so I think the idea of a school, you know, I'm hoping that you guys are right on your numbers, you know, that's, that's in your court. But that some of the trees, like some of the mature trees are going to have to come down because of this bus turnaround, this, that and the other thing. So I guess to be good neighbors and to justify us changing the permitting and everything that we really have to see what's going to happen along that east property line to make sure that you don't have another situation like we have on Ridge where those students come out and through houses and it, it's scary when you go through there, when you see those kids just, they see mom's car and they run across the road.
What, Jefferson, you mean?
Right, yes. It's, it's horrible. So anyway, so I, I guess, you know, these are my concerns and it's something that we can't really say how it's going to be, but I think it's something that we really have to keep in the plans that, about how traffic and kids get to cars. Because you know, if that walkway's still there, there's going to be a mom that's going to be like, just go that way and pick up fast, we make the, your music lessons or whatever, you know, we all been there. So anyway, so that, that's my concern that, that by voting yes on this, that it puts the ball back in your court, that we have to really be good neighbors for what we're doing there.
After the meeting, the planning and zoning meeting, the district did agree at that meeting before the vote that we would remove the path between Fox Hollow and the school district or school building. So there won't be that path that is currently there and it's been closed off by, I think a gate and some overgrown, some landscaping. So we won't be having that any longer and the way that has been designed and actually in the drawing, it no longer even shows that path because we, that's what was presented to Zach Gill and to make sure that we didn't have it coming forward to you. With the other pieces, we have looked at to make sure we design this in a way that we can help reduce the chance that a parent might drop off on a street and then you have a student running across the street in an unsafe manner. Can't prevent everything, but some of the conditions that have been designed into this did address that with assistance from Zach Gill from the city so that we make sure that we address that going in or not creating something that invites parents to potentially do that.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What's the largest elementary school right now? Square footage?
That would be Founders. Founders Elementary is 85,000 square feet.
Okay, yeah, that was formerly a middle school. So this being 70,000 square feet, that's pretty massive for, for an elementary school. You know, we saw with the census that our population in DeKalb declined, but the school district is essentially seeing the exact opposite. How are you building to, one, I'm sure you hired a demographer and they've, they projected this out, but what, is this just fulfilling the issue of reduction in class size or is there any room for potential expansion going forward like how we did the high school?
There is some room for that potential expansion. It doesn't create a huge buffer in it, but it does create that. And with our demographer, the projection over the next 10 years is that we won't see significant growth in our student enrollment numbers. So we are managing with the group, the enrollment we have. Obviously, everything is subject to change and this is, there, there's many phases to the school district's planning. Obviously, we don't just do something like this and then say, okay, we're done. We'll see you in another 10 years. There's other things that we have, we have in the works that we've looked at that are just at this point not going to be up for consideration, such as additions on other elementary schools that potentially could absorb an impact should that increase, we start to see that increase. But again, that's not really in the planning stages right now, it's just future plans. Because we also at some point have to address the capacities in our middle schools, because both of our middle schools and our ELDC, which is our early childhood and pre-K programs, they are also at capacity. So we also have to make sure that we are planning properly in the event we need to move forward with adding on or doing something with our ELDC program, which could then impact our middle school numbers to reduce those numbers.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, council? Yes, Alderman Smith.
My big concern, Zach, I think you're hearing, yeah. I know you're going to double stack on the south side of the building and I'm going to use Little John as a good example because it's a total failure. All the cars, the parents are out on the road, 13th Street, it's a free-for-all on days. I know the Chiefs guys have been up there, they block driveways, et cetera. There's, I don't know, Zach, maybe you can tell me, how many cars are you going to double stack from Normal Road East, do you think?
You could get 60 cars in that circulation pattern. So it's about a total of 1,200 feet from when you would turn off of Normal and make your way through to the drop-off point is about 1,200 feet. Divide that by, you know, your, your average length of a car, whatever, it gets to about 60 cars simultaneously could be in there and obviously we're hoping they're at least relatively efficiently moving, you know, one out at a time. That was part of the impetus behind using Garden as an exit. Anytime you add more conflict points, it's only more dangerous, it's less efficient. You got the, I'm going left, I'm going right, I'm going, you know. So if we take them off of Normal, we move them through, we exit them separately, they can make a different decision at a different part of the street network and keep things moving pretty quick. We also put a pretty significant traffic calming and kind of corralling type feature along Normal and that would be to discourage or take away the, I'm just going to pull over real quick and Johnny's going to jump out. You're, you're in line now, so you'd hope there'd be a little bit of, you know, rural nature, everyone behind you's honk and you can't stop here and let your kid out. We're all in line and we're going through. So even though you're on the public street, you're already being kind of funneled and taken to the only appropriate drop-off area. So we put as much thought into it as we could.
Because along those lines though, you're still going to stack on Normal Road, which are going to stop our transit buses from running, and then Mike and, there's a ton to run down Normal Road.
Yeah.
So either we alter that schedule, I mean, they're going to stack, right?
Well, we'd hope with 60 cars simultaneously, again, 80% of the kids is walkers, that, that's quite a lot of queuing there to relieve that pressure. But yes, we could, we know what that pickup and drop-off window is, it's known. So yeah, we could work with transit if there's a tweak, if you say, hey, these 10 minutes, let's, let's stay away from that as that winds down or builds up, so, yeah.
And I'm going to keep going and I trust your opinion 100%. What about the influx coming off of Garden Road and Normal, down to Normal, when the engineering school and all the schools are letting out on the Garden Road coming, they're all pointed.
You're going out to Garden, so they'll, they'll come to Hillcrest and they'll make a decision there, whether they're making a right turn to circulate back into that neighborhood or, yeah. So yeah, you could have a situation where the engineering school's letting out, people are typically northbound, because you're not supposed to do a U-turn, northbound up Garden. Yeah, so they would, they would reach Garden northbound, but again, you're talking, what is that window of pickup and drop-off? Is that like a 35 to 40?
About 30 minutes for drop-off and it should be about 30 minutes for pickup at the most. Getting out early, based on.
All right. And by the way, I am for the school. I think it's really needed up here. I just want to make sure we're not adding fuel to a fire with traffic control up there. I mean, go down 13th Street, I hear from all the neighbors, my driveway's blocked, my driveway's blocked, my driveway's blocked and nobody moves. And it's in both directions.
Yeah.
And you and I've had that, obviously that discussion and I think they still stack 60 cars going into Little John. Maybe I'll walk over there and count again.
Yeah, we could take a look at what that, that is and the verses there, yeah.
But if you assure me, then I'll, I'll get a yes.
Is this the best option that we have if the school's desired here?
Yeah. Thank you.
Alderman Walker.
Hey, I'm just going to say, you're the best in the business, man. You know, no, the thing is this, I, you could sit here, you can look at, you know, maps and you can talk, but if you go out there with him, he, you know, he just knows how to break everything down to where you can actually see it. Like right here, I'm like, I don't know what you're talking about, but I trust you. So you know, I'll be coming to get you and you'll be showing me, but no, hey, maybe do a great job and I just want to give you flowers in front of everybody because I do behind closed doors.
I appreciate that very much, sir. Thank you.
Alderman Zazada.
I wanted to note that since last year over at Jefferson, I don't know by how many minutes they've extended the drop-off time, but it feels like they've extended it by 10 or 15 minutes difference and it's making a huge difference in how much the cars pile up. It's, it's a world of difference.
I will say the drop-off times for the school year did get expanded after the pandemic. We were handling things differently so that we didn't have large groups together as much as possible, as well as the staffing issues that we were facing. So drop-offs were very limited in regards to what time the parents could drop off and we've now expanded that at all of our elementaries, back to what we were more pre-pandemic.
Right, so for like Jefferson, there's virtually no line now, whereas before there was a line, you know, down the street, so big difference.
Any other comments or questions? Yes.
I, I do just want to note that I'm super excited about this. I know we've been very serious in this meeting, but this is a huge opportunity for the residents of the first ward. It is so seriously needed. It is a great opportunity for all the students in the entire district. I am thrilled to see class size reduction. I feel like that, that's everything, you know, for a teacher to be able to give, you know, three fewer students, you know, it allows all the other students to have more attention and more direct support from that teacher and it reduces the burden on the teachers and the struggle of having 28 kids, God, I can only imagine. So I am thrilled that we're doing this. It's also a fantastic opportunity for the students to have it that close to home and, you know, so I'm really looking forward to you guys doing this.
Thank you.
Yes, Solomon Walker.
Hey, we all know my wife's a teacher and this is a great thing, you know, just to get that classroom down and, you know, I commend you guys with it. I definitely agree with it. I definitely go to the yes.
Thank you. We're very excited to be able to be so close to the families and their homes so that families can participate after hours, be able to walk to the school or have that, a way to get there instead of having to figure out how to get across town because that's where their student is located. And we are hoping with the design of the building, that will be something that can be utilized by the community after hours and weekends in different ways that we, we may not have been able to at some of our other schools because we're able to design it in a way to be able to have that area available without opening up the entire school like we do with some others.
Yes, Alderman Zazada.
Just one last thought, as we were discussing, you know, the struggles in that space, as we move forward with this, as it opens up, I think it would be really good for us to be very proactive in identifying problems early on and quickly resolving them and finding the changes that we need with the support of the city. So, so I just want to make sure that we're on that, you know, like week one, week two, we're really tightly watching it and seeing what needs to happen differently to make this a safe space for our students.
Well, and I will say the district does have a great relationship with the DeKalb Police Department, with the city in regards to if there's things that we do need to address, very good about any, either side, picking up the phone and really having that conversation, getting together and making changes as we've needed to. So we appreciate that support.
Thanks.
Any others? All right, hearing none, I would, let's do roll call to approve ordinance 2023-043 on first reading.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance 2023-043 passes on first reading. You know, in the spirit of cooperation, which the city of DeKalb and the DeKalb School District have had a great relationship, figuring out how can we work together for the, the greater good of our entire community. They do have a timeline right now and the last thing I would want to do is impact one of our taxing bodies that could cause additional burden, especially financial burden, when it came to the issuance of the bonds or whatever financial protections they're doing, contractors, you name it, to impact negatively the building of this new school. I think the city of DeKalb being a partner and school board member Boyes, when we talk about the spirit of getting out of our silos and working together and having that dialogue, I would really appreciate a motion to waive second reading on this ordinance so they can move forward with their project.
So moved, second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Walker. Any questions or comments on that? Roll call then, please.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
So second reading has been waived for ordinance 2023-043. As everyone said, I think unanimously, we're all looking forward to a school being built in that area. We are a community unit school district and the way I always saw that was people in the neighborhood should be able to go to school and be with their friends that live next to them and parents should be able to be on PTAs and be in band and sitting in the bleachers of sporting events or music events and they're next to their neighbors as well. I think that's what really helps build community. So I'm incredibly excited to see this school move forward, proud to be a part of it and really look forward to our continued cooperation on all the different agendas that we have in the city of DeKalb to work together to move those forward. And I'll just call out the reduction of our property tax rate being one of those. So, all right. Appreciate you all. I think we should give a round of applause that we're building a really great school. And everyone here on this agenda item, feel free, you can leave at this point, no need to stick around for the rest. Appreciate you coming out, Tammy. Always wonderful having your expertise in this. And school board member Boyes, thank you. All right, so moving on to agenda item two, ordinance 2023-044, amending chapter 23 Unified Development Ordinance, article 5.09, Central Business District as it pertains to automobile sales. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Verbic, city manager.
Thank you, mayor. As the background report explains, back when, quite a, quite a while ago, in, in looking at what we wanted downtown to look like in five, 10, 15 years, sort of back in 2010s, the, there was a proposal brought to the council, which was approved, that would focus on new automobile truck and recreational vehicle sales and not used vehicles, probably because the, the image in mind, understandably at that point, because there were still a number of them in the downtown area, was that there would be these expansive lots with used cars and not a lot of action and a lot of, a lot of ground space used for what is, was at that time maybe particularly coming out of the, the Great Recession, not, not a lot of commercial activity. So here we are though, and flash forward to 2023, we have a very strong interest in the, the introduction of classic car sales, not repair, not painting, not that kind of a thing, but classic car sales.
Not painting? I thought they do offer painting. I think they do.
Well, there are no, to do painting, you have to have a paint shop and all the rest of that. So, so maybe they might take a pencil and print something. But anyway, the point is, what's, what's before you, this is really a two-part thing as you've read the, the background. First, we, we'd have to allow this in our Unified Development Ordinance and so that's what this ordinance is about. And there are provisions that were in your background detailing what that would look like. The planning commission considered this and was, was pleased with the possibility. There, there were a number of conflicts that night, but on October 2nd, the commission voted four to zero unanimously to support the idea of some text amendments to the UDO that would allow in a, in a limited way, in other words, there couldn't be more than three acres devoted to this. The, to give you an idea, the old, you know, Mooney's setup was something like 15, 20 acres. So that, that was not in mind then and it's not in mind now, but this would, in this case though, we're talking about a building of about 15,000 square feet and, and the opportunity for outside display is not there, it's going to be inside display.
Counsel, questions, comments? Yes. Alderman Zazada.
So are people going to come through and take a look?
Yeah, walk in and it'll be a.
Just want to make sure I get to look at the cars. Just wanna make sure I get to look at the cars.
Okay, so NIU was the most recent user of this space and they, they had a gallery in there, it was a little bit out of sight, out of mind, so maybe it didn't have the kind of foot traffic that was desired, but it, it was an expansive space and it was well-finished and, and so now the proposal is to do something different and invite people in, in our downtown area to take a look, and while they're here, if they're looking at a classic car, they might stay and have a nice meal, so.
Any other comments or questions? Just in case, I'm pretty sure they're doing painting.
No, they're not, look at the next one.
We, we have the, we have the owners in the audience.
No painting? All right, there we go, all right, so that's the clarification we needed. All right, so with that, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I take a motion to approve, or not a motion to approve, sorry, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
All right, ordinance two zero two three dash zero four four passed on first reading, I take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Zazada, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
All right, second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two three dash zero four four, which moves us on to number three, ordinance two zero two three dash zero four five, approving a special use permit for automobile sales in the CDB, CBD, Central Business District at two fifteen North Fourth Street, Classic Auto House Incorporated, Steve Turner. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Larson, city manager.
Thank you, and Steve Turner and Mrs. Turner are in the audience tonight and have already confirmed that they're not gonna be painting in this place. So since you have done the enabling ordinance, which creates the text in the UDO to provide for this, we so hope you'll also support this particular proposal. The Turners are the owners of Classic Auto House, which is looking to purchase this thirteen thousand six hundred square feet property on North Fourth Street in the two hundred block, and it's been vacant for a while, as I mentioned. Those with a longer memory will remember maybe bowling a few lines at the old DeKalb lanes. I think my ball is still there somewhere.
DeKalb Rec.
What's that?
DeKalb Recreation.
DeKalb Rec, thank you.
He had an amazing breakfast.
Yes, and lunch, yeah. All right, we could go down that road, but anyway, the point is that this, this is a building now, as it's been spruced up, that serves this type of use, can store about thirty-five to forty cars in there, well-positioned, and I think that's to be determined as, as the actual layout comes to fruition, so we, we, the staff will like this and we hope you will too, we recommend approval on both readings.
Council, questions, comments? Yes, Alderman Smith.
How are you gonna get the cars in?
Yeah, come on to the mic.
Just out of curiosity, so.
Chuck Shepard currently owns the building and he's gonna, I'm gonna commission him to install a garage door in the back, I believe it's the north section. It's gonna be a twelve-foot wide garage door, so.
Off the alley there.
Off the alley, that's correct.
West side, okay.
Uh, in the back of the building on the north end, yeah, yeah.
Just curiosity more than anything, so.
Sure, sure, mhm. That very right corner, you see it, well, uh, there's gonna be a twelve-foot garage door installed there, mhm, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
What about windows from the outside? Are people gonna be able to peek in and see all the cool cars?
Yeah, you know what, there's, there's some windows in front, if you can see there, I'm not so sure, maybe in front, yeah.
It'd be cool.
In the back, it's got the glass block.
Yeah, gotcha. Alderman Walker.
Hey, what kind of cars are we, are we talking about here? Lamborghinis?
You know what?
I don't have Coens.
Once in a while, I will probably have a Lambo in there, if I own a Lambo, you know, once in a while I do own a Lambo, but I have, but sixties and seventies muscle cars, convertibles are my forte, yeah, I love convertibles, you know, top-down, you know, enjoying the sun.
Oh, I know, trust me, yeah.
Yeah, my Mustangs, sixties through seventy Mustangs is, believe it or not, it's not only a local thing, you know, in the United States, France, Germany, they love Mustangs. It's, it's the best-selling car in the world, Mustangs, yeah.
I'll say this, you know, if I ate dinner, I would definitely walk downtown to come by and see.
Yeah, head on in, yeah. We are gonna post hours from eleven to three, open by appointment only on Saturdays, so, but yeah, feel free to stop in, absolutely, yeah. Hopefully, you know, I'll have enough room between each car, I wanna utilize the space, obviously, indoors, and that's my main goal, is have all the cars inside, yeah, yeah, no, no outside display, so, protected from the weather, yeah, so, yeah.
So with this, are we gonna re-implement Cruise Night? Some may remember that. We used to bleach the streets and all the old hot rods would come out.
No kidding.
And I still remember Cliff Polly with his Boss four twenty-nine Cobra Jet pulling up to the side, bleaching the streets, roasting the tires, it was great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we did it during move-in of students, too.
I'm not old enough to remember that.
Yes, you are. I think you were there.
Yeah, might do a Cruise Night once in a while, might collaborate with The Grove across the street with someone.
Let, let us know if there's anything we can do to help facilitate that, Alderman Walker.
I mean, if you need somebody to help drive them.
Sure, sure, you know, we're gonna need help with moving them over.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two three dash zero four five. Welcome to DeKalb, thanks for your.
Thank you, thank you. Kinda weird, I feel comfortable up here now. Thank you so much.
Yeah, can't wait to see it, and feel free to leave at this time, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, all right? Appreciate you.
One, one quick thing, if you come across a nineteen seventy-nine Dodge Aspen or a nineteen eighty-six, the LeBaron, the Chrysler LeBarons.
Oh, my gosh.
Let me know.
I haven't seen one of those.
I haven't seen those in a million years, I hate, that was my first.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, you know, I sell a lot of cars to people that are reliving their past, you know what I mean? It's just, it touches the heart in that way.
I'm going through a midlife crisis, so.
Right. So am I, I'm right there, trust me.
Chief, please cover your ears for this next part, but I used to be able to get up to one-twenty in that car.
No kidding? Holy cow.
All right, we're gonna move on now. Thank you before we admit to more violations. All right, then moving on to number four, ordinance two zero two three dash zero four six, amending chapter fifty-one Traffic Schedule C, Parking Prohibited as it pertains to minor alterations of parking restrictions for various routes impacted by roadway modifications. Can I have a motion to bring this exciting item to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Walker. Did I hear a scoff out there? City manager.
So, but you're right, this is old, old hat because these changes have, have already been discussed and approved by the council, and what we're trying to do now is clean up the, the chapter fifty-one references to these various intersections in, in roadway, so I don't think you need me to read through this, this is the short list, we try to keep current, but in order to enforce these various restrictions and modifications, we need to have that changed.
Any comments or questions, council? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance two zero two three dash zero four six has been approved on first reading, I would take a motion to waive second.
Motion to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Zazada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two three dash zero four six. Do love dotting our i's and crossing our t's. All right, agenda item M, Reports and Communications, council member reports, who'd like to kick us off? Alderman Zazada.
I had the privilege of meeting, and I serve on the Lieutenant Governor's Military and Economic Development Committee, and I had the privilege of attending the meeting most recently, and we heard from a speaker on cybersecurity, just sort of emphasizing how important cybersecurity is and the importance of making sure that our government stuff especially is not susceptible to that risk. So just wanted to mention that and keep that at the forefront of our minds and the city manager's mind moving forward.
Alderman Smith.
No report.
Alderman McAdams.
No report.
Alderman Walker.
Hey, the seventh ward wants to, like I said, thank Zach Gill, we had some, some situations where kids were almost getting ran over going to the park, so Zach came out there and did what he does, and we appreciate it, thank you a lot, sir.
Alderman Verbic.
I was welcomed warmly by the Airport Advisory Board, excellent first meeting, and was able to attend the Back Alley Market, which was just an, an amazing event, more crowded than ever, not crowded bad, crowded good, and I think more vendors than ever in its five years of existence, so, thanks for putting it on, everyone.
Alderman Perkins.
Alagoalderman Verbic thought was downtown this weekend for the Back Alley event and also an event at the Egyptian Theater. Theater was awesome, staff was awesome, great weekend.
There's a great photo of you guys up front.
It was cool.
Alderman Larson.
No report.
For me, I'll just be really brief, the DCCD had their annual dinner, so it was the retirement party for Executive Director Paul Bork, and our new Executive Director was installed, so it's just great to see another reign coming in to help us continue the positive momentum we are, are seeing when it comes to economic development in our community, and city manager Nicholas and I both were on the interview committee, so it was nice that DCCD made sure the city of DeKalb had a, had a say in, in the conversation, and we were able to weigh in on, on candidates that we wanted to see that would help represent the county but also represent us in its entirety. And then I would echo the Back Alley Market, I went there at two, two-thirty, packed, like, packed. I, I was blown away when I came around the corner and saw it. Talk about our local merchants getting together and putting on a great event, I know city staff helps coordinate that and permitting with Ruth Scott, but it was really neat just to see our local merchants stepping up and putting on an amazing event, I had a ball walking through there, and I had the biggest darn pork, what do they call it?
Tenderloin.
Yeah, pork tenderloin sandwich, if anyone saw it, I posted online, oh my god.
That one looked like a cookie.
I know, I know, it did, it did, but just a wonderful event, so it's just cool to see downtown DeKalb continuing to be vibrant. All right, city manager, anything?
Two quick things, just one last word on the bond upgrade.[1645.61]